Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. The room is not full, but everyone who is here, I'm really glad to see you here. I'm Teri Pearson. I'm one of your facilitators for tonight from Resolutions Northwest. We've got a team here we'll introduce you to shortly, but first I want to turn it over to our mayor to welcome you here tonight.
Thank you, Teri. Thank you for coming. This is a listening session in which your city council hears your concerns and we hear from the professionals who manage our water and environmental services bureaus about our utility rates. So, we're looking forward to getting first here from the commissioner charged, then from the bureau staff, and then from you. So, thank you very much for coming. Commissioner Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to begin by thanking all the professional staff that organized this event, from the bureaus, from the budget office, from the respective commissioners' offices. Thank you all for your great work. This is the Second Annual City Utility Rate Review, and it is an opportunity for the public to come in and learn more about your utilities and how we do ratemaking. You'll have a chance, you'll see a PowerPoint, have a chance to ask questions, and you'll get answers either tonight, or if not tonight, answers will be posted later online. We have a customer question table out front, and that's because last year, a number of people came with their bills, and they wanted to know why they were being charged, what they were being charged, and some actually disputed their charges. So, we have professionals here. If anyone has a bill, they will be happy to look at it and tell you whether we're getting it right. I also want to preview a big change that's coming, and that is the new Portland Utility Board. Last year, a blue ribbon commission that the mayor and I established convened, and they issued a very thoughtful set of recommendations, which included a new oversight body. This is the last year that we'll be hearing from the existing citizen oversight body, which is the Purb, and we'll have a chance to thank the people that have worked so hard and diligently over the years. Next year, we'll be joined by the PUB, which is the new version of a citizen oversight body, and it is to be formed, and we'll have more to say about that this summer, but they will be in place. Our goal is to have the new body in place by August to tee up with the next budget cycle. Thanks to my colleagues, and thanks to everyone who took time tonight to join us. We look forward to making the presentation and getting your feedback. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Great. So, that gives a really good overview of what the purpose is for tonight. So, I want to maybe just move right into finding out who is in the room. So, first of all, from our team, I want to introduce Teresa Logan and myself. I'm Teri Pearson. We're joined here by Keela Johnson, who is here in the front. She'll be doing timekeeping for tonight. We'll tell you more about her role in a minute, and Liz Erickson, one of our volunteer facilitators. So, we're from Resolutions Northwest. We're a nonprofit organization here in Portland. We do conflict resolution, facilitation, restorative justice, and equity services in Portland. There's some information about our organization in the table in the back. But, we want to know, who is here in the group? So, let me, let's see. So, for, first of all, who is here at a community forum for the first time tonight? Hey, two and a half of you. It's your first time. Great, welcome. Thank you. And how about, who feels on the other side like you're at every community forum? Yeah, yeah, some, so there's some hands there, some familiar faces. Hi. How about in between? Imagine, yeah, that's everybody else. Yeah, thanks.
And how many of you live or work in northwest Portland? How about southwest Portland? Southeast? Northeast? And anyone from outside Portland?
Hey, all right. Welcome.
North Portland.
It's on the list. Thanks. North Portland is in the house. Thank you. Um, let's see. How many of you, this is the one I'm curious about, how many here work for the city of Portland? Yeah, yes. Yes, many, not all, and many of us here, of you here, we don't work for the city, many of you here tonight. Elected officials, other than the folks sitting, of course, up here at the table, any other elected officials in the room? All right. How about folks from the media? Other than our, yes, our video folks. Okay, great, thanks.
And how many people here are here to learn about how the bureaus operate and how the rates are set? And how many of you feel like you're already pretty highly informed?
Cool. Just curious, when you think about the rates that you're paying now, those of you who are paying or affected by the water sewer, stormwater rates here in Portland right now, how many of you kind of think about current rates and you feel like those are basically too high already? Right now, those rates are too high. A couple of hands went up very quickly. Several hands are up, maybe four, five hands.
Can I ask how many people work for the Water Bureau and BES?
Oh, instead of just city? Would it be helpful to know how many are water versus BES? Okay, let's come back to this for a second. So, how many of the city staffers, how many of you are here with the Water Bureau? Okay. And a hand from your commissioner. How many are here from BES, Bureau of Environmental Services? So, that's the, kind of, the group back in the center. Other bureaus, Budget Office, couple in the back. Anybody else I should call out? Okay, was I, I hope that was helpful. So, several people here really strongly felt the hand, by hands, that the rates were currently too high. I want to ask the flip side. Is there anybody that feels like the rates we're currently paying are too low? Laughter from the group. I will say that sometimes we ask a question like this, and hands do go up. So, that'll happen. Okay, so, yeah. So, there was, so at least one hand for that. And just about right? So, not really. So, okay, great, thanks.
All right. And when you hear that the rates may increase this year, how many of you feel concerned?
Kind of a lot of the same hands, that we're feeling like rates were high now.
And how many support a potential increase?
There's a hand, yeah. Okay.
And how many are curious or feeling something else?
All right. Cool. Great. Well, that's helpful for us to kind of just get a sense of a little bit of who's in the room, even though the number of folks who are here from the community to testify is smaller than usual tonight. You want to continue?
All right. So, just an overview of what we have on the agenda planned for tonight. We're going to have a presentation from David Schaaf, the Water Bureau Director, and...
Yep, and his team. They're from Water and BES, yes.
And then, we're going to have a chance to have a very brief conversation about any questions that might generate for us, and a chance to provide those in written form on the index cards. Some of those may be answered tonight. All of them will be answered online in the coming weeks. And then, we will have some invited testimony and room for a public comment.
Great. So, there's basically several ways to give your input tonight. Some folks really like to do that by being able to speak on the record. So, for those of you, I suspect there is going to be time for everyone who wants to speak to be able to speak. The folks at the back table have hopefully given you a chance to get a number, if you'd like to be on the speaker's queue. We're going to draw those at random. Is there anybody that would like, that you know you would like to speak tonight, but you don't yet have a number? Okay, let us know. So, just go to that back table if you should change your mind. We also know that some people really, that speaking in front of everyone is not your preferred way to give that input, so there are also those written comment cards, and there will be also a web link that I think will be another opportunity to give your input, and also to see the answers to the questions that are generated tonight. Couple of just housekeeping pieces. Snacks, it will not bother our facilitation team if you keep yourself fortified as we go along tonight. Get coffee, get refreshments. There are restrooms out the door and to your left. There's men's and women's restrooms. There are no gender-neutral restrooms in the facility, but I believe they are wheelchair-accessible. And the information table that Commissioner Fish mentioned is also kind of out the door, just on your way to the restrooms there. All right. Did I miss anything? All right. So, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to you, David Schaaf, the Director of the Water Bureau, to begin the presentation for tonight. So, again, remember if there are questions that you have, we'll come around with some index cards and give you a chance to jot down your questions.
Okay. Well, we'll be going fairly quickly. Between BES and water, we have about 38 slides, and we've calculated, we have about 30 seconds per slide. So, we will be going through them quickly. We will be posting these on our website, so if we're going too fast and you want to look at them later, we'll have these up within the next day or so, and we'll make sure we know how to operate this thing. Ah, we were afraid that was going to happen, so... How about you do it? Would you mind just pointing it at it when you get up, go up there, Bill, and then I'll trade you places? You have to... Teri, can we maybe get you?
Yes.
I'll just, we'll just tell you what, yeah, you need, you need to point it at the front of that black box. I think you need to get on the other side of it. I think you need to get on the other side of it. Yeah, yeah, and pointing it at that thing. There we go. All right. Sorry, am I just going to tell you when to change it? Okay, so, just to set the stage, our current, the rates that our customers are currently paying, our combined average residential monthly bill is $94.79. Of that, $29.54 is water, $65.25 is the sanitary sewer, stormwater, superfund. You can skip the next, to the next one and the one after that. So, what does the water system consist of in Portland? We have approximately $8 billion in assets, and I don't know if you can read those up there, so I'm going to go through them very quickly. We have two water sources, the Bull Run watershed and the Columbia South Shore wellfield. We have 40 pump stations, and I know most of the time, we brag about how we're primarily a gravity-fed system. About 80 percent of our system is fed by gravity, but we do have to pump to parts of Portland, mostly in the West Hills, but even some over on the East Side. We have 66 tanks and covered reservoirs. We have over 2,000 miles of pipe, and that pipe ranges from an inch in diameter up to over 60 inches in diameter. We've got 14,000 hydrants, 45,000 valves, 130 drinking fountains, what we call the bubblers, and 177,000 meters. Next slide. So, we are proposing a 7 percent increase, and that will result in a requested average residential monthly bill of $31.61. That's for water, just water. And of that, $977 goes to the debt service payments, so the principal and interest. $1,384 goes to operating and maintaining the system. $585 goes to improvements to the system, and the other, the $215, goes to what's called the utility license fee, and then the central services. We pay something called the general overfund head, overhead fee, and that pays for things like the council, the auditor's office, the attorneys, payroll, accounting, finance, government relations, the Office of Equity and Human Rights, ONI, and planning and sustainability. Next slide. So, put it another way, our water costs, you get 1.9 gallons of water for a penny. Next slide. So, how do we compare? We are, this is a slide, and probably those of you sitting in the back can't see very well, so starting from left to right, Rockwood Water District, City of Tewallaton, City of Milwaukee, Clackamas River Water, Tewallaton Valley Water District, City of Beaverton, City of Gresham. We're the green slide, and there's a little hashtag there that shows the 31.61 proposed increase. Then, we have West Lobe Water District, City of Lake Oswego, and City of Tyger. Now, this is comparing our requested rates to the current rates of all these other jurisdictions. They haven't modified their rates, so we're actually comparing ourselves, what we are proposing, to everybody else's current rates. Next slide. So, what does our water system do for you? We provide excellent water. I think everybody would agree with that. One of our primary missions is to protect public health, and we provide water every hour, every day. The one, the thing that we pride ourselves in is our ability to deliver water 24/7, 365 days a year. So, what does it do for you? We provide a number of different services. The picture on the left is a firefighter who's got hoses hooked up for, at a hydrant, so obviously, we provide water for firefighting. We respond to emergencies. Those are the two gentlemen in the ditch doing a pipe repair. And we provide for future needs, and that's the lower right-hand picture. That's a photo of Palbute Two, the large reservoir that we just built up at Palbute. This was taken a few months ago. A photo today would show that the reservoir has been completely covered. It's in the process of being graded and planted with meadow seed mix, so that it's going to blend in to the surrounding park. Next one. So, how do we take care of it? That's a guy named Rob Brinkman. He is one of our operating engineers, and he is working on what's called a pressure-regulating valve. Over 75 percent of the five-year capital spending that we have is for replacing aging pump stations, pipes, meters, mains, and other elements. We do things like what Rob is doing there in that picture. We inspect those assets to identify the needed repairs, whether or not we should repair, replace, or rehabilitate them. And we identify those risks. This is what we call asset management. We identify and assess risks. We analyze the benefits and costs. We weigh the alternatives. About 296 of our 391 million, five-year CIP is spread out on efficiency, maintenance and repair, replacement, and mandated projects. We also reply, or we also prepare for emergencies. We plan and train for emergencies. That's a picture of the city's new Emergency Operations Center. We have a portion of that. It's not something, it's something we do on a regular basis. We do exercises and drills. We're a member of something called ORWRN, the Oregon Water, Wastewater Agency Response Network, where we coordinate with other water providers in the region, and we participate in the statewide Oregon resilience plan. The picture in there is of bureau staff that were organizing during last May's boil-water event, when we were told by the state that we had to issue a boil-water notice. So, that's a picture of the staff actually there that particular Saturday morning as we're putting, as we're putting into place our emergency procedures. I'm going to turn to Jeff Winter. He is our Capital Projects Manager, and he's going to go through the next couple of slides for us.
So, one of the larger portions of our CIP is to strengthen what we call the system backbone. Those are the essential elements necessary to provide water in the event of those natural disasters that seemingly occur other places but here. Earthquakes, landslides, floods, those type of things. So, the backbone includes conduits, certain large pipes, storage, both in town and in the watershed, and other distribution system elements that feed the critical places like hospitals, fire stations, evacuation sites, things of that nature. So, there are two pictures on your left, and the one in the center represent one of the best cases of that work. The one on the left is the original Sandy River, one of the conduit crossings of the Sandy River. The one on the right, which particularly, or in the middle, if you're in the back, is a little dark in this version, is where we've actually placed that pipe underground. So, it's well-protected from things, you know, coming down Sandy River, which, as you know, if, you know, over the past couple winters, there's been some events there where there's been some issues, where the river's changed course, a lot of rocks, so that's protected from there. The picture on the right is our crews actually installing what we call e-drip. It's earthquake-resistant ductile iron pipe. It's been used in Japan quite extensively, successfully survived many of the major events there. It's also been piloted down in Los Angeles, so we were, we've installed this in a couple areas prone to landsliding, and just, you see a picture of our crew there, actually installing it, just to make sure we could install it with not too much extra work from our regular piping system. We've also upgraded our main parts warehouse to withstand and be fully operational after the Cascadia subduction zone, so we'll be able to respond and be out in emergency rather quickly. We've also upgraded the groundwater pump facility, so that even if we lose some of the supply from Bull Run, we should be able to provide water to town. Next slide. Last year, if you were at the forum, you may have recalled that we had a picture of the I-84 crossing as one of our hazard reduction projects, prevention. This is a better case where you can't see it real good from the picture there, but there's little blue lines on there that indicates where there's a 14-inch old water main that has a history of leaks. It's actually about two feet away from the railroad track there that you see on the right. UPRR, Union Pacific, is doing some railroad upgrades. Now, the picture on the right is not our system, but it's certainly what could happen if the water was to be unleashed from the pipeline. So, we're in the process of relocating that away from the railroad right-of-way into the street right-of-way, so we will not have a disruption of the rail traffic, which, you know, we expect at least 3/4 to $1 million worth of social cost, just in delay of the rail traffic alone, not necessarily even to do the repairs.
So, what do, what do the independent agencies, how do they rate us? We have an excellent credit rating, the highest you can get from Moody's. It's AAA. There are less than a dozen water-only utilities in the country with bonds that are rated AAA. Moody's last report said that their rating was due in part to our sound management and strong operating policies. This means that we can obtain the lowest borrowing rate, saving ratepayers money, and doing more with what we've gotten. The 2014 bond rate that we recently, bond sale that we had was for 3.2 percent for $85 million. Moody's continuously goes through a process of rating us. It looks at our current ratings, or our bond ratings on our new bonds, and it reaffirms the rates on our existing bonds. So, we are current, we are always being looked at by somebody like Moody's. The next slide. So, what are our challenges? And we have three different pictures to kind of illustrate that. The, one of them is aging infrastructure. That's the picture on the left. It shows a large break in 100-year-old pipe in southwest Burnside, right at the entrance to the, to Chinatown, back in October of 2013. This cost approximately $135,000 to fix as an emergency measure, but it also cost more than about a half million dollars in estimated cost to businesses and traffic disruption. We have regulatory issues, such as LT2, which required a lot of capital for compliance. A current estimate for LT2 for all of our projects is about $278 million. That's less than the 329 we thought we were going to spend in 2009, but it's still substantial. And then, we have, as Jeff was alluding to, seismic risks in the region. In mid-July, the U.S. Geological Survey published new findings that show that our earthquake risk in our area is higher than they've estimated in the past. We have six active crossings going underneath the Willamette River, aging in range from 1912 to 1983. The oldest three crossings serve our central city core and are in what we refer to as liquefiable soils. So, we, one of our projects is to deal with that risk and build a new underwater crossing over the next five years. With that, I'm going to shift over to Jim Hagerman, the Director of the Bureau of Environmental Services.
Thank you, David. Good evening. Jim Hagerman, Bureau Director for Environmental Services, and I'm here with Bill Ryan, our chief engineer, who will take part of this presentation as well. So, if we could go to the next slide, please. BES manages about $13.2 billion worth of assets, estimated replacement value, in the sewer and stormwater systems. And that includes more than 1,000 miles of separated sanitary sewers, 800 miles of combined sewers, 400 miles of storm sewers, about 47,000 manholes, 1,500 green streets, a number that's growing continually, about $50,000, 50,000 stormwater inlets that take stormwater from public rights-of-way and get it into the system, and about 800,000 feet of culverts and ditches that also convey stormwater. And that's about 151 miles. Next slide, please. Okay, thanks. So, the bill that we're, the average bill that we're requesting with the budget this year is $67.76. And of that, about 52 percent of it is debt service payments on revenue bonds, so to finance our capital construction. $21.65 of that, or about 32 percent of it, goes to operate and maintain the stormwater in the sanitary sewer system. About $5.69 is for sewer and stormwater system improvements, and the remaining $5.21 goes to, similarly to the Water Bureau, primarily for utility license fees, which we pay to the city for use of the right-of-way, for central services purchased from the city, and also for superfund charges. So, how do we compare to other cities? What you see here is a cross-section. Similar to water, these are current rates for other cities in gray, and then, in the green, and for the darker one is us. That's our proposed rate, and our requested increase is about 3.85 percent. The thing to note is that we are not the highest rates, either nationally, obviously, or even in the immediate vicinity. Lake Oswego is slightly higher than we are. And the other thing to note here is that many of these cities are combined sewer overflow cities, and so they're dealing with a problem that we're essentially through with now, having done $1.4 billion of work on it. Many of these other cities are looking at 20- to 30-year capital programs that may cost them $2.5, $3 billion. So, we would expect that in 10 years, this graph will look quite a bit different than it does now. So, what does the system do for you? Well, it moves sewage from homes and businesses, and it takes it to our wastewater treatment facilities, where it is treated, the contaminants are removed. It also prevents stormwater from getting into the pipes, and this is often very cost-effective to do. On the right side, you see some stormwater facilities. It's often cheaper to infiltrate it than it is to build bigger pipes, and that's becoming an increasingly important part of what we're doing. So, next slide, please. Thank you. We also are very much in the watersheds, restoring watershed health, and that has a number of benefits. Streambank restoration and floodplain restoration can, for example, help protect property from flooding. Also, maintenance prevents sewer backups and keeps sewage out of homes and businesses. So, now, I'll turn it over to Bill Ryan, our chief engineer, who will take you through the capital part of the budget.
Thank you, Jim. So, how do we take care of it? After spending 25 years essentially building brand-new infrastructure, in 1986, we were required by the state to bring sewers to 50,000 homes out in the East County area. About the same time, we started design of the combined sewer overflow system that Jim mentioned, that $1.4 billion project was completed in December of 2011, on schedule and on budget. After 25 years of building new infrastructure, a few years ago, it became time to concentrate on rehabilitation of the existing older infrastructure. We have two treatment plants built in the early '50s. We have hundred, approximately 100 pump stations across the city that vary in age from 40 to 60 years old. We have 2,500 miles of pipe, 30 percent of which is over 80 years old, and you can imagine, after 25 years of concentrating on other things, we've got a task ahead of us. How do we take care of it? You can see us taking care of it every day out there on the streets of the city. Here, we have a map of the Hollywood Grand Park project, and I want to point out that there are two ways for a pipe to fail. One way is for a structural failure of the pipe, where it actually collapses, or for a sewer system to fail, I should say. Another way is for it to fail in capacity. There are two ways for it to fail in capacity. One way, or two ways to fix it when it fails in capacity, rather. One way is to build bigger pipes, but you can imagine there's a domino effect as you build bigger pipes all the way down the line, as more and more water enters the system. Another way is to get the water out, and as you see on this slide, we're doing that by adding green streets, as Jim mentioned previously. previously. Why green streets? Well, as you see here, the green streets take lots of water. The first one we built over 12 years ago, and since then, we have measured, we have monitored, and we've built over 1,500 of them. They have proven their effectiveness, and they've proven their cost-effectiveness. Back to Hollywood Grant Park, you can see that not only do we have capacity problems, but we also have pipe problems. The guy on the upper left is not a paid employee, although he looks like somebody I recognize. Anyway, the next slide. Right now, we have about 450 open capital projects. Some of those are essentially done. They're in the warranty phase now, and we're just tracking them to make sure that there aren't any defects left behind by our contractors. Many of them are in construction. As you drive through the city this summer, you'll have the opportunity to wave at our contractors as they're working on them. Many are in design, and many are still in planning. We expect this reconstruction phase to go on for the foreseeable future. Right now, we have over 10 years of projects on our books. So, what do these projects do for you? Dust, noise, disruption, but they also result in a well-maintained public sewer system, and they bring jobs to the city of Portland.
Thanks, Bill. So, our bond rating is AA3, AA- from the two ratings agencies, and that is a typical rating for a sewer utility, and it is a good rating in terms of the investment, investment grade of the bond. So, that allows us, has allowed us, to take advantage of the interest rate climate, which has been very favorable for the past few years. So, as opposed to water being in the low 3, we're in the mid-to-upper 3 range, which is still a very good rate on borrowed funds. Next slide, please. So, some of the challenges we face. They're very similar to other utilities, going from financial market uncertainty. We will continue to borrow in the five-year forecast interval, and if interest rates go up by a fair amount, that would be upward pressure on rates. We're hoping that rates stay pretty low. Aging infrastructure, most of our infrastructure you don't see, but when it fails, it can often become very visible, and we like to catch it before it fails. And then federal and state regulations, we comply with the Clean Water Act, as you would expect, but we also have to comply with the Safe Drinking Water Act because of some of our stormwater facilities, and the city needs to comply with the Endangered Species Act. And what we find is that, over time, these regulations are getting more and more strict. They're not getting more and more lax. And so, in the future, there may be regulatory requirements we're not anticipating now, but that could add considerable amount of expenditures, the Bureau. Next slide, please. This just gives you a snapshot of the replacement value of the assets. We have Bureau of Transportation there for comparison, and I'll let David talk about water if he'd like. As you can see, we have $13.2 billion replacement value in assets for sewer and stormwater systems. Much of that is in very good, good, or fair shape, but the 17% that is poor or very poor still comprises $2.2 billion worth of assets, and it is that which is, in large part, driving this still robust capital program to make sure the system continues to deliver the service that we need it to deliver. Okay, so, next slide. So, the proposed combined average residential monthly bill, then, is $99.37 per month. Next slide. And that represents a combined increase for the two utilities of 4.8%, or about $4.58 per month. And then finally, to summarize again, what are the benefits? Well, we're first and foremost protecting public health, providing excellent water. We're working for cleaner rivers and streams, which includes better habitat, obviously, but reduce flooding, property damage, water efficiency. We're trying to maintain and improve, protect water quality, including the watersheds, and to protect and replenish groundwater as well as planning for future needs. So, if you'd like more information, we have a couple of links that you can follow for water and for BES. And again, to remind you that any questions you ask here that we don't answer, we'll have posted answers online by April 3. And then finally, please feel free to provide comments to anything you've heard.
Great, thank you. Oh, yes, they're in back. Thank you. So, thank you very much to the team of four here for your presentation. If there's anyone who wanted to see a copy of some of those slides, let us know, because Liz can come around. She's got, we've got probably enough for anybody who wants them here, so definitely some folks there. And so, that will give you a repeat of where to go to look for the answers to questions and all the updates on dates and contact information. So, when we pictured a huge group of people, we wanted to, we thought we'd build in a couple of minutes for you to kind of talk about what's coming to mind and give yourselves a couple of minutes to kind of speak to each other, but I'm guessing you might kind of rather just move right into it. Am I right about that? I'm seeing nods. Great. So, we have some index cards. If anybody has come up with a question about the presentation that you have heard, Liz also has, oh, no, she doesn't. So, Teresa has some index cards, and so you can write down your questions. They may be able to answer some tonight, but they will answer, they've pledged to answer all the questions online by that same date that we just heard there. We're going to move, our next piece is to move into invited testimony. There are several folks here who are representing a body of community members and city officials who came together on a particular official city advisory board or committee. And so, a representative from each of four groups is going to speak, and we're going to give them a few minutes. I think at the moment, we only have two people in our speakers queue, so there will be time for everyone to speak. Y'all can keep thinking about whether you would like to speak, and we'll give you another chance after this. But we're going to start with Mike Ellis from the Water Bureau Budget Advisory Committee. Great, welcome. And we're going to start using our time signs here. Keela's got these, so she'll hold up the green one-minute sign when you've got one minute left, the yellow 30-second sign, 30 seconds left, and when you see red, time is up. So, we just usually warn people, you might see the signs. If you're up here speaking, you might see the sign longer than you need to, but just remember, it's kind of partly for the speaker, but partly for the rest of us to know how time is passing as well. And one other thing, if you hear something that you agree with, we find it's really helpful to just kind of put your hands in the air, because it's a way that your council may be able to see visually who is in the room, how many people are resonating, agreeing with something that you hear, and it's a way that they can do that without taking away the time from the person who's speaking. So, I'd just like to ask you all to do that, and I'd like to ask council to really be watching for that as a way to kind of see what opinions might be in the room. So, without further ado, Mike, go ahead, and you've got four minutes.
Tell me, sir, how, how close, tell me how much time I have as I ran it out to the end.
All the way to the end, minutes upon minutes. You've got four, four minutes.
Okay. Well, I thought I was going to get two, but you were hoping to get off the book very early.
Can you bring the microphone close? You might have to hold it by hand. Oh, there we go. Thanks.
There we go. That helps. Okay. I speak as one of your citizen representatives on the Water Bureau Budget Advisory Committee. And one of the interesting things is I've just completed 10 years of involvement with community water systems. The first was where water was gold, in the Samson County, in the Puget Sound, where the rain is only 20 inches a year and everything comes out of wells. That was a very interesting hydro-geological experience. But now, here in Portland, the majority of the water comes from the surface, and that's different. So, I've been on both sides of the water system. And for much of the early winter this year, the advisory committee drilled down into masses of data to come up with a plan for dealing with four major planning concerns. And I wanted to just talk a little bit about each of them. The first one is, as you've learned, we inherited an enormous and sophisticated system in the main, gravity-fed, but some of those pipes are very, very, very old, and yet, we're completely dependent on them. So, replacing that very sophisticated system that was paid for by the Portlanders from long ago, it's our responsibility, in my opinion, as a citizen, that I want our system to be maintained so that we can pass it on in the same or better condition to our children and our grandchildren. This is a very, very important part of what the Budget Advisory Committee has been concerned with, and you heard from Jeff about all the projects. Water is critical for our system as biological entities, so it's got to be safe water, potable water. Now, should our system be polluted, either accidentally or deliberately, the system is a very efficient way of delivering those nasty substances to thousands and thousands of people. So, it's very, very important that we honor our obligation to provide safe, potable water. That was one of the planning concerns that's before our eyes all winter. We live in an area, as you've heard, where you must plan for major emergencies, large earthquakes. Jeff gave you a whole list. I want to add in another one. Terrorism is a major new threat to the American way of life. We have to plan for that. Finally, as a citizen who has to write checks, we were very, very concerned with keeping the rates as low as absolutely possible. Now, there's a responsible place, where we balance the future with the present. And so, we tried to find the sweet spot where the budget met all four responsibilities: safety, maintenance, emergencies, and cost. The Citizens Advisory Committee believed the budget you heard about tonight hits that sweet spot, and when we came to the end of the process, we supported the budget that's been presented to you today. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thanks for your volunteer service.
All right. Next up, we have Michael Harrison from the Bureau of Environmental Services Budget Advisory Committee.
Again, my name's Michael Harrison. I was on the BES Budget Advisory Committee. Members of our committee spent several months delving deep into the issues of the BES budget, as well as how BES operates and its capital, capital investments and future capital needs. Although we discussed kind of a great many budget issues, we came up with two very straightforward recommendations, fairly straightforward recommendations. While we had all gone in, or many of us had gone in, hoping we could sort of identify a way to avoid a BES budget increase by perhaps finding some sort of savings that maybe Bureau staff hadn't identified in the past, unfortunately, we ultimately concluded that a 3.85% strategic rate increase was warranted, that it was both necessary to protect the existing infrastructure and the investments we have in our infrastructure, but was also important to protect the community livability, such issues as sewerage backups and what can happen in neighborhoods when there's sort of catastrophic failure of the system. So, that was our primary conclusion. Our secondary conclusion, we spent a fair amount of time trying to wrestle with the notion of using green infrastructure, since the Bureau has developed sort of a greater reliance on that over time, such as the on-street stormwater planners. We want to make sure we felt, as a committee, comfortable that that was a good use of city funds and ratepayer funds. And ultimately concluded that maybe not in every case has it always necessarily been an investment, a good investment. We didn't necessarily study every single stormwater planner that was put out in the right-of-way, but we felt that there was enough evidence to suggest that oftentimes, and more often than not, they are ways of protecting the overall ratepayer into the future. And that was it. Very short this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
So, next up is the representative or representatives from the Portland Utility Review Board. So, Gordon Finer, and I think there might be a second person, so we'll start with four minutes for your team. And if you need a little bit more, there's this time in the speakers queue if you run over.
I want to thank Michael Harrison for covering the points that I had regarding the BES/BAC process. I was a member of that committee as well, and members of the PERB also served on the Water Bureau BAC. We have, formally, informally, I'm not sure if we've actually voted on it yet, but approved of both of the recommendations regarding rate increases by each of the BACs. However, I wanted to speak a bit about rates and that the 4.8% combined increase this year, it's, it is justified, but I believe it's a bit, especially given the mandates and the needs of the Bureau and their maintenance and infrastructure investment issues, but it's also cause for concern. Looking at the next five years, there are projected increases of 48% for BES, 17% for water, or is it the other way around? That's right. Okay. That's a lot of money, and city council's going to need to be vigilant on making sure that all these expenditures are justified. You know, in the past, thankfully, not the most recent couple of years, but there have been a number of questionable expenditures that maybe didn't necessarily amount to a lot of money, but they severely damaged the credibility of the Bureau's and city council's decisions on funding those. And so, I encourage all of you council members to be extra vigilant on these budgets and make sure that every single expenditure is justified. One recommendation that the PERB has had that may somewhat streamline the budget process is possibly moving to a two-year budget cycle. This could help smooth rate increases and allow for deeper public involvement, although less frequently. And I wanted to speak to the transition from my board, the PERB, which is, thankfully, we are done after this year, and after five years, I get to not have to worry about this stuff anymore. Transitioning into a new board, this is, evaluating these issues is difficult and time-consuming, and I want to encourage you to find people who are dedicated to the process, but also people who have a diversity, both socially and economic, but also in their professional expertise, so that there's a wide range of, there's a wide knowledge base involved there. I think there's, you know, Cub is becoming involved, and Janice has been tackling the learning curve very quickly. There's going to be additional resources in terms of staffing for the new pub, but getting the right members on board is probably going to be the most important thing, and I encourage you to really put some time into recruiting people who are going to do a good job on it. And now, I'd like to bring out my colleague, Mr. John Gibbon.
Thank you, Gordon. I'm going to share with you copies of materials that we're going to be submitting to the planning commission tomorrow, which probably Commissioner Fritz will remember the days that she was on that commission. As they're working through the comprehensive plan, we've worked very closely with them. You will see that this is a comment on issues related to transportation planning and stormwater planning, which reflects some of the issues that have already been shown to you in slides and other things. We tried to take a look at where we saw surface water problems across the city and make recommendations on how they should be addressed. Our recommendation that we're passing on to them and to you is that PERB recommends, as part of its update of the comprehensive plan, the city needs to clearly state that it has a policy favoring stormwater and transportation project concurrency. Such a policy requires coordinated planning of city
Such a policy requires coordinated planning of city stormwater management and transportation improvement projects. The recently released P-BES Coordination Charter appears to be an excellent step in this direction, but it needs to be enhanced by clear policy direction that this approach is and will, without explicit changes in the comprehensive plan language, remain city policy. We don't want a falloff on that effort.
Thank you. There will be some more time in the speakers queue if you didn't get the chance to say everything. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Our fourth person for scheduled testimony will be Janice Thompson from Cub Citizens Utility Board.
As was mentioned, Janice Thompson with Cub. So I've written testimony, and so to conserve time, we'll just highlight a few items. I was actually pleased to be recruited to serve on the Utility Oversight Blue Ribbon Commission, and so much of the first page summarizes my take on its key recommendations. And I would echo the earlier comments of the importance of recruitment there. On Table 1, on Page 2, I kind of map out my sense of how the budget process in a year from now should probably look different. You know, there will be that September-January timeframe where the pub will basically kind of be replacing the backs. The CBO review for the City Council is still a very important piece of the utility oversight puzzle, and that will occur, you know, in February. A change is to have the first utility rate hearing, I would submit, about a month later to kind of sequence out the review, and so there can be a longer period of time for the pub to take a look at the requested budget informed by the CBO analysis. And one advantage of this is it also just kind of spaces out and facilitates more efficient use of bureau time in terms of, you know, they're getting set of questions from one set of players, and then there's another period, so they're not getting lots of questions all at the same time, and I think, you know, helps avoid duplication. And another idea is to, you know, with the, you know, the Council Budget Work Session would be a hair later and things like that, and it would also, I think, could actively involve the pub. So just a few, I think, ways to think ahead to 2016. Turning to the rest of the document, on Page 3, there's a handful of items that are applicable to both bureaus. This is where Cub is going to disagree with something you just heard, which, because there's a discussion there of continuing annual rate session, rate setting. There have, you know, that has been something that the pub has been potentially asked to take a look at. The financial forecasting is just so challenging that it just seems like if you tried to have it apply over two years, it would just, you know, you could just conceivably just really have, you know, much more significant jumps. At the very least, it doesn't seem like, you know, given that this new pub is going to have a lot on its plate, necessarily a number, you know, a top priority. And there's actually some very good discussion in the CBO review of the Water Bureau's financial forecasting on this point as well. Challenges and opportunities related to BES are kind of outlined, kind of Pages 4 to 8, and there I just want to highlight. Ending, kind of a practice that got started a while back of kind of reducing the sanitary, the sanitary sewer system development charges, or SDCs. They were kind of reduced for a year and then frozen, and there's kind of been no catch-up plan. And really, in effect, that is asking other ratepayers, you know, to subsidize developers. If that had not been in place, for the current fiscal year, it's estimated that there would have been about two and a half million additional dollars coming in revenue. So this is, the sanitary system development charges and SDCs in general are outlined by state law, and so not all that could be charged is being charged. And that just seems like a practice that needs to end. And then the Water Bureau discussion kind of goes from 8 to 10, and there I would just want to highlight the importance of upcoming long-range planning updates and some new reports, and the importance of active involvement of the pub in that kind of, those kind of planning efforts. And also just letting you know that Cub will be monitoring all that carefully as well. Fit it into the time.
Thank you. We've gotten to the point where we're ready for community comments. We have two people who took a number when they came in who wanted to provide their comments tonight, numbers 101 and 102. We'd like to invite you up at this time. And if I could also ask for a show of hands if there's anyone else in the room who would like to provide public comment tonight. Okay? We do have a two-minute time limit for these comments.
Okay. I'm Janet Markley Hayes. Do you want my address? I'm new to all this, so I took some notes. And one thing that I'm confused about, the water proposed increase is 7%, and we're talking about a combined increase of the water and the sewer of 4.8. Could somebody please explain that to me?
We do have it set up tonight that we are taking comments, and questions can be provided on those index cards and will be answered online.
But because, if, I think, just to, in the spirit of this gathering, let me, it's such a great question, if I could bend the rules just to give you an answer, and the directors will correct me if I'm wrong. For the typical residential customer, 1/3 of their bill is water, and 2/3 of their bill is sewer stormwater. So if the 2/3 portion of the bill is proposed to go up by 3.8%,
I see.
And the 1/3 portion of their bill is scheduled to go up by 7%, the blended rate, the actual effective rate, because it's, what you're interested in is on the entire bill, how much more am I going to pay? That is at 4.8%.
I see.
And it is the second year that we've been able to recommend a rate increase below 5% blended.
Thank you. I would like to comment that the developers should be paying more of the cost of the infrastructure improvements, since they are benefiting from that. If I can't actually ask questions, I will leave that as my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide comment at this time?
There's not many people here, so I'm sure that the staff would be more than happy to answer any questions that you have right here and now, rather than waiting for Brit- but, I mean, not from the podium, but somebody will be happy to talk with you.
The CBO.
It's the City Budget Office. We established an independent budget office that looks into all of the requested budgets from the different bureaus. And one of the recommendations, I hope, is that we're going to be having utilities, experts on staff in the City Budget Office, so that there'll be dedicated staff who year-round will be looking at all the budgets for water and environmental services.
And before you jump into the rest of the questions, I just wanted to clarify, was your proposal that after the close, there might be people present who could answer questions? Okay, so anything that you'd like to be, have answered kind of in a more public forum, go ahead and write those questions on the index card, so those written ones are the ones that'll be responded to online. But it sounds like we may be moving toward close. We'll give kind of a final call for testimony, but as we move toward close, you may be able to look for some of the many folks who are here in the room on council or on city staff that may be able to help with answering some of the other questions.
Mike, David, or Jim, or Commissioner Fish, might want to let people know what information is available online and where to find it.
I think we have one more person testifying. When we wrap up.
Here, I took your-
Oh. Sorry. Good evening. My name's Floyd Jones. So I was going to ask a number of questions, but I'll just make some comments since we're not asking questions at the moment. I wanted to respond to a couple of things that you said, Mayor Hales, in an interview with KABU. You may not be informed, I mean, you said that Rochester is doing exactly what we're doing here with regard to LT2. That's absolutely not the case. They've received a 10-year deferral. Their governor in New York, their mayor have all gotten involved. You suggested that the governor had no authority over this. Well, our governor is in charge of the Oregon Health Authority, and so they can direct the Oregon Health Authority to approve a deferral for us. Senator Schumer has been successful. He got the EPA to include revision, review and revision of the LT2 rule as a part of Obama's executive order to look at and revise onerous regulations. So I still encourage you to go back to the Oregon Health Authority. We have a new director, and we have a new governor. I think it's important that when consultant contracts expire, as has CH2M Hill's Palbute II design contract, which we all know that design was completed years ago, that expired in December, that contracts be brought to council in a timely manner. That hasn't been brought to council. I asked the Water Bureau engineers about that, and the new tactic is, oh, well, they took out the permit. So they have a right to have that contract go on and on and on. We've seen that before. We saw that, you know, in 1995. The same corp consultant got two contracts. They went on for nine years because no one was paying attention. So Joe Glicker's CH2M Hill contract started in 2009. It expired after being extended, and their contract increased 45%. It expired in December. There should be a report to council by now on that. The Budget Committee, yes, I hope there are great improvements in the future. This last year, it was exactly the same committee that was there the year before, the year before that, and the year before that. Amanda, your staff person didn't attend this year, but when they attended two years ago, they said that committee was really just a cheerleading group. And that's how I viewed them this year. I could frankly only stomach attending two sessions. They did no line item review. They didn't dig into anything where there could be cuts. I know, Mayor Hales, you've talked about reducing the number of supervisors to staff. Why not start at the Water Bureau? They shouldn't use that as a strategy for increasing income, you know? Middle class in Portland is really strapped at this point, and you cannot just, year after year, raise rates. You need to find a way to make some cuts. Thank you.
Before we turn this back, is there anybody else who wanted a last-minute chance to speak to council? Okay. So what we would do is probably turn it over to you all and see if there are closing remarks you'd like to make, and then we'll make a summary and close.
Well, I'm going to close by doing some thank yous. I want to thank the professionals who work for the Bureau of Environmental Services and the Water Bureau, and a number of them are here today. They provide great public service to this city, and they don't hear this enough in a public forum, but thank you for your good work. Second, I want to thank all the citizens who volunteered this year to serve on a Bureau Advisory Committee and our Purb members for their service. Third, I want to thank Janice and the Cub for their work. As my colleagues know, this is the first time the Citizens Utility Board has acted as an outside independent ratepayer advocate for, in a public utility context. They've saved somewhere around $6 billion on behalf of ratepayers statewide, but they historically have been an advocate for private utility, ratepayers of private utilities. This is the first time they have taken on this assignment funded by the ratepayers, not by the city, and we think their contribution has been invaluable. I want to thank the members of the public who took time tonight to come, and particularly those of you who testified. And we will follow up. There'll be folks sticking around. For those of you who still have questions, would rather ask your questions in an informal setting, we'll be able to do that. If anyone here has a bill either with them, or at some point later they want to give to us, where they'd like us to look at the bill and make sure you're being charged appropriately, and if you have any questions about your bill, we'd be delighted to do that, and we do have staff outside. I want to put a plug in for monthly billing. It has taken a long time to be able to offer the option of monthly billing. Can I see a showing of hands of all those who are here who have signed up for monthly billing? It's a good start. We would really be happy if everybody did so, and since I am the least technologically proficient person on this panel, I was able to sign up, and I'm able now to pay monthly. And it's extremely convenient because I get an email notification of my bill. It's paperless. And so if anyone would like to know more about monthly billing, or would like help getting your monthly billing set up, we'd love to be able to help you on that. And finally, we'll be coming to council later this spring with the actual legislation that establishes the new oversight body, the pub. And again, we have a great debt thanks to the members of the Purb who have served so faithfully over the years. And based on the recommendation of the Blue Ribbon Commission, we're going to establish a new body. And as a Purb member noted, we are looking for people who are truly committed to this mission. People from diverse backgrounds, representing all parts of our city, but a primary consideration will be individuals willing to roll up their sleeves and make the commitment, because this is a big ask. And we think it's so important that we will be dedicating two full-time staff people who will be independent staff people that are at the service of the pub. And we think that's important if we're going to ask people to make this kind of commitment. So, and finally, to my colleagues, the work of leading your utilities is challenging, and you have seen from the PowerPoint not only how big their mission is, but how many moving parts there are. And I want to close by thanking you for the support that you give to us in the performance of our duties, and we look forward this spring to working with you to fine-tune the budget recommendations and to finalize the budget. So with that, Mayor, I recognize you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And again, thank you to your staff and your office and to the bureaus in putting this proceeding together tonight. I just want to reinforce a point that Commissioner Fish just made, and that is the importance of people that are willing to do what Mike and Michael and Gordon and John have done, step up and be volunteers in the city's deliberations. You should never underestimate how influential you can be if you do that. So for those of you who are considering doing that through the pub or through some other part of our citizen engagement process, it really does make a difference. The council is very familiar with our group of citizen advisors who help us on the general fund budget. And really, there's one woman in that group, Katie Larcelle, who probably, single-handedly, has focused the city council's attention most sharply on issues of equity for East Portland as opposed to the rest of the city. Katie is fearless in making sure that that is attended to in the general fund budget process. And the point of that story is that one person can show up and really make a difference, and she has, and so have the folks that we've heard from here tonight. So if you wonder if their time was worth it, one, ask them, and I bet they'll tell you that it was. And two, you can see from our reaction to citizens that get engaged, whether it's in the council sessions or in those kinds of citizen involvement opportunities in the city, it really does make a difference. So I also want to encourage you to participate. So thank you all. Anything else, Commissioner, to add?
We neglected a couple other people to acknowledge, Mayor. We want to thank our friends at Portland Community Media.
Yes, indeed.
The best in the business. Thank you for setting up and filming us this evening. We want to thank all the good people at the city's Independent Budget Office that are both staffing this and are serving us in many ways. And I want to give a special shout-out to Sonia Schmansky and Jim Blackwood on my team. Could you raise your hands?
There they are. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. And finally, let's give our friends from Resolutions Northwest a robust round of applause for their video. They are the best in the business. Thank you, ladies.
Thanks very much for coming, everyone. Good night.